I'll give fifteen seconds to the TV studio as a heads up on the proceedings.
Good afternoon. The time is one thirty-two PM. The date is Thursday, December fourth, two thousand and twenty-five. It's another beautiful day here in paradise, and I'm happy to call to order the regularly scheduled December two thousand and twenty-five meeting of the City of West Palm Beach Zoning Board of Appeals. I will first have our Board Secretary, please call the roll.
Deborah Peters. Dana Picotte.
Present.
Christopher Hagan.
Here.
Sherry Hack.
Here.
Jonathan Burgess.
Yeah.
Let the record reflect that Emily and Savage and Alfred Fields are not present.
Okay. With five members present, we do have a quorum, and that means that all people appearing today will be participating in the voting on the matters today unless there's a need to recuse themselves. With that, we do have a quorum, so we'll begin the meeting by standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. You may be seated. The first order of business is approval of the minutes from our November two thousand and twenty-five meeting. Those were included in the board packet that was distributed prior to the meeting, so hopefully everybody has had a chance to review them. If there are any additions or corrections to the minutes, just have anybody who'd like to make those make note of that. If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve.
I wasn't here, so I shouldn't be.
Okay. Is there a motion on the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Is there a second?
Second that.
Okay. The motion was made by Board Member Picotte and seconded by Board Member Peters. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved. The next item on our agenda is report for our Planning Division staff.
Good afternoon. Chair members, staff has no report at this time.
Okay, thank you. That goes to now to report from the chairperson. First of all, just a clarification on our procedures for this board. Our board attorney had informed me that because this issue came up at the last meeting, if it's a vote to approve a matter that's, for example, a variance, like what comes before us, then the supermajority of four votes is required. But if it's a motion to deny, that the way the bylaws work is actually, it just requires a majority, so that's three votes. Again, we did run into that last time, and just wanted to clarify that that's the case. So that has been clarified if that situation were to come up again. With that, I'll go through the procedures for the meeting. Matters before the Zoning Board of Appeals are quasi-judicial in nature. Anyone wishing to speak, including members of the public who wish to offer public comment, will need to be sworn in. The applicant will make a presentation, answer any questions from the board. The applicant will then be followed by city staff, who will then provide a presentation and recommendation to the board, and then answer any questions. Members of the public will then be given the opportunity to provide comment, with each person receiving up to three minutes. City staff will also insert any public comment received in advance at today's meeting, such as emails, voicemails, et cetera, into the record. The applicant will have the opportunity for rebuttal, and then the floor will be closed, and the board will go into executive session for discussion, a motion, and then a vote. Just a reminder, again, for an affirmative approval, four votes are required. With that, that concludes my remarks, so we'll go into ex parte communication. I'll start on my right with Board Member Burgess.
As to all the matters before us today, I have not had ex parte communications. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit. I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you. Member Hack?
As to the matters, case numbers three five 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 and three five five seven, I have not had ex parte communications. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit. I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you. Member Picotte?
As to matter, case number three five 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 and three five five seven, I have not had ex parte communications. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit. I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you. Member Peters?
As to matter, case three five 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 and three five five seven, I have not had ex parte communications. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation, and I have not made a site visit. I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you. And for myself, as to matter, three five 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 and three five five seven, I have not had ex parte communications. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit, and I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record. With that, that concludes the ex parte communication, so we'll now move to the public hearing portion of the agenda, and start off with the swearing of the speakers. Anybody who wishes to speak on any of the matters that are coming before us, please rise, raise your right hand, and be sworn in by our Board Secretary.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Thank you. We have one case that was continued from our prior hearing, and so I'll have our Board Secretary to please read that item into the record.
A request by Fernando Rodriguez for a variance from section ninety-four dash three oh two B of the city's zoning and land development regulations regarding the installation of a fence and gates along Bunker Ranch Road to be one foot higher than what is permitted within the front setback. This case was continued because the board wanted more information about the finance impact of the applicant to fix the fence. The subject property, consisting of approximately point one eight acres, is located at three four four Bunker Ranch Road within Commission District Number Five, Commissioner Christina Lambert.
We'll now ask the applicant to please come forward. If you'd like, you can, we did hear the presentation last time, but there are, I think, two members who were not present at the prior meeting, so if either a full presentation or recap, whatever is your pleasure, feel free. And then anything that's changed since the last meeting. Thank you.
Ms. Chair, I would suggest if there were members who were not present at the last meeting, a full presentation would be appropriate.
Okay, yes. Thank you. Yeah, yeah, if you're able to provide the full presentation, again, because there are a couple of members who were not present previously, that would be helpful.
Good afternoon. I'm Fernando Rodriguez, the applicant. So on the last meeting, we went over my request to be granted a variance for the height of the driveway gate and the pedestrian gate. The reason for that is this, the permit drawings were originally submitted as a five-foot gate. During revision, it was indicated that it had to be a four-foot gate. We revised the drawings. They were approved, provided to the company that was making the gate. There was some sort of miscommunication. They installed a five-foot gate in lieu of the four, and when they called for final inspection, obviously, the inspector failed the final. So that's why I'm here today, to ask to see if it would be granted to just leave the gate in place. Part of the reason is that there is a cost impact to basically tearing apart the entire gate and rebuilding it. From what the manufacturer is saying, because of the way they built it, it's all welded together. It's not just screwed together. We, so in the presentation I have here, this first slide basically is pointing out, we reached out to, obviously, we sent out all the letters that were required, and in addition, we reached out to all of our adjacent neighbors, all of who, all of the ones that we have communication with have provided written letters of support for the variance. The second slide obviously had some information that was, you know, there are other gates in the near area that have taller than four-foot gates. It was informed that they, some of these gates are allowed to be taller, since they are on Olive or South Flagler. There's still others that are not, but, you know, that's, each case is, this is a copy of the letters of the neighbors, the adjacent neighbors, that are expressing support. And then, this is kind of a, just a summary of the comments that I received last time, and kind of my response to some of the things that were questioned. We can go back to this a little bit later. This actually happened Saturday, so we had, one of my neighbors had a break-in on his house. This is two doors down, across the street from me. These are other properties in the area that have gates that are taller than the four-foot, and these are not on Olive or Flagler. Again, I know that previous approvals are not precedent to this matter, but just wanted to show. This is pictures of the gate as installed now. So the first one is looking east on the sidewalk. There's a construction, so you can see it's kind of, the house next door is getting, there's construction going on. Then from across the street, looking straight on, then looking west, and kind of if you're driving through, and from the inside. And then these are a copy of the drawings that were submitted and approved, as you can see from the stamp, that were built and installed and incorrectly installed. And that's basically the presentation. I don't know if you want me to read basically what I have written here, but in the previous meeting, one of the board members had expressed concern of setting a precedent with the project, that because the contractor made an error, and now they're asking for me to pay for that error, and, you know, the, the way I stand on that is simply that if I can't use the precedent as, I can't use the precedent in my favor. It shouldn't be held against me in terms of the approval. And then, in addition to that, if this were to be a precedent, the precedent is, we sent over a hundred letters, zero complaints, and on top of that, we have letters of support from all the adjacent neighbors. So, I mean, I think it's safe to say that there's not a lot of risk of this being a controversial approval, should it be granted. There was another comment that said that they felt it should meet all the standards in order to get approval. I think, you know, that's, I don't believe that to be accurate. I think the board is here to give a little bit more nuance to the decision, because if it's just check-the-box of all that apply, then, you know, it's, the staff could do that. They could just apply it directly with no interpretation or no, you know, you know, no thought to, you know, the specifics of each case, is simply check the box, like I said. Financial hardship, which was the main reason for the continuance to this, so I did reach out to the gate manufacturer, and I do have the estimate for the rework. Like I said, they would have to basically remove the gate, take it back, cut it, re-weld it, repaint it, reinstall it. So it is a significant amount of financial hardship and time as well for me. I don't, it's not in the presentation, but I can provide it if needed. So I, you know, I'm asking for your consideration on that as well. And then, there was, I think Mr. Hagan had made a comment that he didn't think that the difference between a four-foot gate or a five-foot gate made any difference in terms of added security. You know, if that is the case, which I don't agree, but if that is the case, then, you know, it shouldn't really be interpreted as this approval granting me any special privilege that any other person would have with a gate in their home. And that's basically, that's the presentation that I had, and the new items that I brought today.
Thank you. So we'll start off with Board Member questions, if there are any questions of the applicant. I'll start off on my right with Board Member Hack. Any questions of the applicant?
How much is it going to cost you for the new gate?
Seventeen hundred dollars.
My question is, who made the error in the difference in the gate between the four-foot and the five-foot? And based on that, if it's the manufacturer, why won't they take the responsibility for payment?
So the original design was five feet. When it was sent in to permit, it was reviewed, and obviously, we were told it had to be four feet, as you can see in the proviso in the drawing. When they manufactured it, they went by the original drawings that were submitted, which was a five-foot gate. The reason why they are charging for the change is because they did not produce the engineering drawings. I had a structural engineer produce the engineering drawings, because it's not a standard sliding gate. So I had to hire an engineer to prepare the drawings for them to manufacture, and since they weren't the ones that did the engineering, they're alleging that it's not their responsibility that they are entitled to, that be paid the additional amount to fix it.
Board Member Picotte, any questions of the applicant?
So just to be clear, the engineer did the drawing. Who received it back when they were manufacturing it, that it said it should be four feet? Was it the actual manufacturer?
Yes, the drawings were prepared by the engineer, and they were submitted by the gate manufacturer, who's the contractor in the project. And when they received the drawings back, which is what was in the presentation, it was sent to the contractor. It didn't go back to the engineer.
Okay. So the contractor should have saw that it said four feet, though, correct?
Yes.
So they should be taking responsibility?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Member Peters, any other questions of the applicant, or, I'm just going down the line, yeah. If you don't, that's fine, I just.
So is the amount of seventeen hundred a substantial financial hardship for you, or?
I mean, it's not only the seventeen, it's also the money that's already been spent for this process. It's, you know, the submittal application, all the, you know, the letters that have been sent out, the time that I've had to take off work to come to present. You know, it's a few thousand dollars. It's not just the seventeen. It's been, it's been, it's been a process. So, yes, it is, it is a hardship for me.
We'll go to Board Member Burgess.
Just so I understand it correctly, because, forgive me, I wasn't here last time, but there's a drawing in the packet, the fence schematic diagram. Do you have that on your sheet, too? Yeah, so, I mean, I see the heart of the miscommunication. I have a stamped drawing from the city that says both four to eight inches, has a proviso on a drawing that has five feet dimension everywhere else. So it's definitely probably the source of the confusion, but I just, my question is, does that, is that how it happens, where the permit drawing gets stamped, and then the red text shows up as the only way to communicate the change to the contractor?
I don't know if that's directed towards me, but this is what I received from the permit application.
It had that red mark on it, okay?
Yes.
Okay, so it was just not taking that back and making it part of a revised set of engineering plans that then translated to a new fabrication. Was the fabrication of the gate already underway?
I don't know if they had started fabricating ahead of the approval.
And you said the traffic along Bunker Ranch Road, does that lead to, can I just see the intersection, is that a streetlight intersection?
Yes, it is. It's at the corner of Dixie, and I don't know if you know where Spartan Cleaners is, and Goodwill, that's that.
Sidewalks on both sides of the street?
Yes.
Compared to the street to the south, where it doesn't, okay, thank you.
No further questions for the applicant? Okay. I have no questions this meeting. Okay, thank you. We'll go to staff for staff's presentation.
All right. Hello, everyone. My name is Jane Drummond. I'm going to represent in this case, three five five five, for Bunker Ranch Road, is for the variance of the fence. So the request is to get an additional one foot in the, for the fence. It was, it is required to have four feet, but they constructed it incorrectly, and it is one foot higher, so that is the reason for the variance. The applicant's original reason for installing this gate is because they wanted to deal with security reasons, and they were concerned about traffic in the area, but by mistake, it was built at five instead of four. So here's just an overview of where it's located. It's between South Dixie Highway and South Olive Ave. The South Dixie Highway obviously has more commercial spaces on it. It has a Goodwill, gas station, hotels, laundry mats, anything that's general commercial. And so I did a small analysis on the street. As you can see, there is no, on the block that he's on, no one has fences in their front yard. They mostly just hold on to their nine-feet hedgings, and the only three that I saw on Bunker Ranch Road was towards South Olive and South Flagler. Here is the schematic and the site plan. You can see that the proviso was put on the schematic and on the survey. The survey, if you can't read it, says that the gate shall not exceed forty-eight inches in height, within the required front twenty-five foot. And you can make out that it stamps on both of the schematics and on the site plan, so when the contractor does get these plans, they do see the stamps on all the paperwork. And when it is finally constructed, the inspectors look at all the paperwork that was submitted, and the inspector themselves print out whatever was approved. So the contractor and the inspector definitely saw the stamps on both of these site plans and schematics. Here are my site photos that I've taken of the area. You can tell that it's on a roller gate, and if you can sort of tell, there's a couple gaps between the gate, actually, that is more on the builder's fault, too. On the bottom-left picture, you can see that there's a, maybe a foot, maybe slightly more of a gap, that they would have to also re-correct at some point of the fence. And then in the middle-left picture, you can see that there's also a gap of about five inches where a small child or a dog can get through. So there's multiple errors with the gate. Here I have just a small video of what it's like to stand on that street, and what the normal environment's like at one o'clock in the afternoon. There's no sound, but it's just the general vibe of the area. So that's the construction that he mentioned earlier, at his neighbor's. Here's a car coming by, and there's a speed bump right outside of his house, so the car gently stops, sort of, I would say, slow down, and that's his house right there, the gate in question and the tall hedges. And there's a speed bump. There's also one more speed bump, a little further down, right before South Olive, and there's two more in between the South Flagler. I pulled just, I believe, two or three examples around the neighborhood. You can see here that the fence has decorative elements, so it is at four feet, but it swoops up, and it is actually approved that way in our code, because decorative elements can go ten percent higher than what is required. So it gives the illusion that some of these fences are taller than what they should, but they are using decorative features to get that extra foot or a couple inches on there. This is more of an evidence of what was approved, so that swooping gate also has a proviso on it to not exceed the forty-eight inches, and it is labeled that it was going to be four feet high. The next one is at the intersection of South Flagler and Bunker Ranch Road. This house has a wall that's slightly below forty-eight inches, but it uses a decorative feature, similar to the swooping gate. So it appears a lot larger than it is, but the driveway gate that swings out is taller, but the caveat to that is that South Flagler is that swings out is taller. But the caveat to that is that South Flagler is a major road, so they're allowed to have a higher gate than usual. So it actually does meet code. And to address the crime in the area, I pulled a crime statistic for the area. The only police report that was filed for this house was for an audio, an alarm audio, which just means like the ADT alarm went off. There's been 14 cases of suspicious persons around the, about a quarter of a mile radius. And there's been two suspicious vehicles in the area. Relating to the speed of the cars and the traffic around it, there's been in total 33 traffic stops and four were at the intersection of Bunker and South Dixie. And so we are ending it with the final staff recommendation. Unfortunately, it does not meet all the standards, so we have to recommend a denial. The first one being letter A, that there's no special conditions or circumstances particular to the property or structure in which the front configuration, if at four feet or a similar character or configuration, will be in the same zoning district. The actions of the applicant also failed because the hardship arises from the applicant's, the builder, and the engineering's own fault for not adhering to our code. It would be a special privilege because the other gates in the area on the same road use the code to their advantage to get slightly higher fences. And the literal interpretation, security concerns does not demonstrate that a four-foot-high gate deprives the applicant the property right to secure their own property, especially which they have close to nine-feet-high hedges. And that's the general overview of the project.
Thank you. We'll now go to questions up here of staff. So I'll start on my left with Board Member Pecot. Any questions of staff?
No questions.
Okay. Member Peters?
I have a question. There's a gap on the side of the gate which you said will need to be rectified, otherwise the pet or child can go through it. So regardless, this gate will still have to be fixed regardless of whether it's four foot high or five foot high.
To my understanding, when I was talking to the applicant, they were saying that the fence has to be fixed to fix that gap because they do have a dog that can get out. That's from my understanding.
The fence or the gate?
Oh, I'm sorry. The sliding gate. The sliding gate in the building.
Will have to be fixed to close that gap.
Exactly.
Okay.
Okay. Board Member Burgess?
Yeah, I think, so the comparison of the other properties in the area within a radius map that have a similar condition, it was interesting that you chose Bunker Ranch Road as the evaluation limit, sort of, and you had a broader map. I'd be interested if you compared maps. Did you get a chance to look at the map prepared by the applicant for today's session on those other kind of case studies?
I did. He referenced one that was on South Olive Avenue, which has a similar condition to the South Flagler house that I brought up. It's allowed to have a six-feet-high gate because it's on a major road. I did look around at some more local roads and I didn't see too many fences in general. The one that I did see was permitted in the 80s and that was two blocks south.
Okay, thank you. And then Bunker Ranch Road, I'm not sure if you know this or not, with the stoplight along Dixie between that stretch, south of Southern, is, there's only so many stoplights along Dixie. So would the qualification of the stoplight along Dixie change the designation of Bunker Ranch Road to more of a major road, in your opinion?
No, not.
That's still a local collector road, just based on the traffic patterns?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good.
Yeah, those are my questions for staff. Thanks.
Board Member Hack?
No questions.
I had just one question, and I think I forgot or didn't think to ask this last time. If you could go to the slide that, it was from the inside of the property, and I'm just trying to understand the request, that one, yes, at the lower right, because the request talks about the pedestrian gate and the sliding gate being five feet. Here it looks like, I can see the sliding gate, but there's also fence and they all seem to be the same height. Would, is it actually that everything needs to be lowered to four feet, or is it just that the gates need to be lowered to four feet?
So the large, if you look at the top-left photo, the small patch of white is the pedestrian gate that is, needs to be lowered to four feet. And the lawn scratch is the rolling, like an accordion gate. So it would slide and that's also above. So yes, both the pedestrian gate and the driveway gate, it's under the staff recommendation to be lowered at the correct height.
Okay. And that's what I saw in there that, right, that the request was that those two gates be lowered to four feet. It looks like there's a section of fixed fence that's five feet, but that's not in question. Is that, so the code allows that to be above four feet, or is it just the gates that have to be below?
No, everything within the front 25 feet of the setback needs to be at a height of 48 inches. So the fence, pedestrian gates, swinging doors, anything in that that would be classified as a fence gate or anything like that.
But the only piece of this that, where the variance is being sought is from, is for the gates themselves. So is it that there's either, I just want to understand if that should be part of the request or not?
Little confused because there's not necessarily a fence there. It's just the pedestrian sliding gate and the pedestrian gate.
You are correct, Chairman. Angelo Van, Assistant Development Service Director. If that's the whole gate there, if the gate and the fence is connected, then yes, that whole thing needs to be at four feet.
It's the lower, yeah, it's the lower right photo.
Yes, I see what you're saying. Where the car is and where the, is that a fence that comes along behind the hedge? Is it a fence behind the hedge?
It's a fixed panel so that nobody can walk.
So is that the sliding gate being open?
No, that's the gate closed.
So yes, if all of it has to be four feet.
By code, where the code would require it to be.
By code, yes. And the request would be extended to the whole thing, yes.
Yeah, this is the only photo, again, it just kind of caught my eye because the others are all from the front. The only parts that are visible are the two gates. But I was trying to understand, it looked like that was a fixed fence, and I was trying to understand if there was a different requirement or not.
Yeah, I see what you're referring to, is the fixed position. That would also have to be lowered. Yes.
Is there a requirement for a continuous perimeter fence along the front setback? Or could he, he's using the existing landscaping to form part of that fence, right? Would the landscaping filling the gap also be the solution? Or does it have to be a refabricated fence for a certain distance?
There's no distance or linear feet requirement. It was just an error that was brought up to me by the applicant, that the gap was not done correctly.
Right.
And so, and you can barely make it out, but they do have like this sort of chicken wire that's embedded within the hedge. So in the bottom-left, there is a bit of that chicken wire fence, like kind of pushed out into the concrete. So they're using that as a temporary fix for the variance. Whether or not they're going to be approved or disapproved, they're going to have to redo the fence to their liking, not necessarily to our liking.
And the follow-up question is, this fence and perimeter fencing system, including the hedge and the gate, this isn't being used for pool perimeter fencing requirements or anything else that would dictate a permanent perimeter, kind of fully enclosed property? I'm just wondering if it's just completely on the applicant to fix the construct, from a constructability standpoint, or does this now become the required barrier around the pool in the back?
I believe he has two fences on the side.
Okay, so that's what's certain that requirement.
So that would enclose, it would close the pool in behind it. And he has, so he has two sets of gates.
Got it. Yeah, so there's not a need for a continuous perimeter blockade unless prescribed by the applicant. Right, got it. Thank you.
Well, as a dog owner, I understand the need for a continuous blockade and as, especially our former dog who was often wandering down the sidewalk and I'd get calls because her, my phone number is on her collar. But, so I understand the need for, you know, to make it continuous and have it complete. That was my only question of staff. Again, just trying to understand, because the documentation referenced the gates, but that photo, again, caught my eye. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, absolutely.
At this point, if there are no other questions of staff, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Anybody in the audience who wishes to speak on this item, please come forward. I did not receive any cards, so I'm not sure if there's anybody else who's here to speak. Okay. And I'll ask staff if there are any emails, voicemails, or anything else needs to be entered into the record.
I did receive one email a while back saying that one of the neighbors didn't like the fence. That's about it. He said it looked ugly, which I didn't include it in the PowerPoint because I didn't feel like it was inadequate.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I don't know if, yeah, if we can enter that into the record if it's not actually, if we don't have it physically present. But thanks for, I guess, letting us know. With that, I'll close the public hearing. I'll ask the applicant if he'd like to make a rebuttal or any closing statements. Feel free to come forward.
I just want to clarify, let me go back to this picture here. So the bottom-right picture, the gap that you see in that picture is actually the pedestrian gate being open. That's why I think you were confused because, yes, there is a fixed panel. The way the sliding gate works is it's those two leaves that are operable stacked behind that fixed panel. The reason for that is for safety, so that someone or something can't get stuck in between the active portion of the gate. But yes, there is a small gap on the, on the closing side, which you can probably see on the top right corner, which we have, yes, enclosed off with a 30-inch, basically, chicken wire. To Mr. Burgess, questions, we do have to modify to close that gap, but that does not require changing the rest of the fence because that closes against the post and we would just need to add past that post. We wouldn't have to remanufacture the entire thing in order to make that modification, which is a lot less work than, you know, redoing the entire thing. And from terms of the traffic, I know that he showed that video of 1:00 on a weekday with no traffic, but I can guarantee you there's a reason why there's speed bumps on that road and not on all the other roads in the neighborhood. Because yes, since it is a traffic light, a lot of people, rightfully so, use it as a way to get in and out of Dixie because you do get a break from traffic to go either north or south, which, you know, I understand why it's a thoroughfare because it's probably the safest way to get into, you know, one of the main thoroughfares. And then the other thing regarding the gates that are on Flagler, yes, the properties aren't Flagler, but all those gates are on Bunker Ranch. They're not on Flagler directly. So I understand that, I don't know if the code makes a difference if it's facing, it has to be facing Flagler, or if the property just has to touch Flagler to get the exemption. But I did include a couple of additional homes in other streets in the neighborhood that also have taller than four-foot gates that have been approved. And that's it. That's everything I have. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move into executive session. Before we do that, I did, I just want to turn to the board attorney because one of the questions that came up, and I think is important to clarify, was related to variances and whether or not all of the variance standards are required to be met. So I did just wanted to clarify that prior to our discussion because that will be, I think, the basis for the discussion.
Yes, the request is for variance. In order to grant it, it must meet all of the standards that are applicable to this request. If you deny the request from the applicant, you're also required to identify which standard has not been met.
Thank you for clarifying. So for the discussion, I'll start off with Board Member Peters, if you've got comments and items for discussion on this.
I'm good.
Board Member Burgess?
Yeah, I've got a few things. So I think, you know, and I'm learning about a lot of this this month, and I appreciate you, those of you who have had a little bit longer time to contemplate and think about what your perspectives are as well. But, you know, I think I totally respect and understand where staff is coming from with their position to have to recommend the denial based on some of these clear interpretations. But I think that there are some things here that we're open to interpret, you know, given the context of some of the explanations today that looked at a broader kind of, you know, radius of similar homes in this neighborhood that had done something or has asked for permission like this. I think, generally speaking, east of US-1, we're going to be looking at more applications of increased fence and gate heights in general because of the increased finished floor elevation heights and floodplains going kind of closer to the water and some of the kind of flooding impacts along the street. And so there's some new considerations to have about properties east of US-1 in general. But this being a road on a streetlight where there's sidewalks on both sides, which not every street has, and it is one of the few stoplights along Dixie that would qualify this for more of a, maybe not a full level of service, different infrastructure, but certainly a more, a busier intersection than others. And so I think there are some peculiarities about the land itself, that position, this applicant, to go through a process to ask for our opinions on it. And I think that the precedence in some of these other examples are there. I think generally looking at whether a five-foot height up against an eight-foot hedge, you know, is appropriate, I think is something that we're here to discuss, and I'm interested for your feedback. But the variance itself, I think we've seen in some capacity before, being asked of the board to give for some height allowances along this changing section of the city where there's a lot of elevation concerns and a lot of kind of work like this happening. So I just wanted to kind of suggest that we think of the context of the changes in the neighborhood more broadly speaking than just the ones that are happening to his immediate neighbors within Bunker Ranch Road. And look at, you know, the one, the mistake, the process of the sequence of operations of how this was done was clearly a mistake that could cause a lot of additional finger pointing. And not all the stakeholders are represented to give us a full perspective on who to assign the responsibility to. So the owner is doing what he's been asked to do, which is to come back towards us to ask for this process and our perspective on it. And so in my, and I know that's not an easy process to have to go through. So I think that we deserve some time as a group to think about, you know, whether or not it's the process alone that frustrates us through this, or whether or not it's the interpretation of those four standards that we can address A through D to see how do we feel about our, you know, about our ability to comply with each of those four standards. So that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Board Member Hack?
I agree with what you just said.
Board Member Pecot?
I think Mr. Burgess brought up some good points. I do appreciate the applicant taking the time to put the presentation together and the city to add in their additional information. I think we have a lot to weigh in here. I guess the frustration comes from, you know, obviously the manufacturing and, you know, the city assuming that, you know, they stamped it and it should have been done correctly. The other thing is the type of fence it is, I think, is in question as well. Maybe perhaps if they had done some sort of design to the other one, you know, it probably wouldn't have been such a... sort of design to the other one, you know, it probably wouldn't have been such a sore point. Additionally, do we feel that four feet versus five feet, is there a significant advantage to them having that extra foot? And financial hardship, is that going to play a part? Because I know it did last time. People were concerned. So just a few points to think about.
I mentioned, I don't want to be too redundant. You know, last time I said, I understand how, how this arrived at this place, and if I were in the applicant's shoes, I would be doing the exact same thing. I understand. I do think it's incumbent upon, you know, it's, I, I don't think this is the applicant's fault. I think it's incumbent upon the, the contractor to properly do their job. They, if they were handling the permitting process, it was clearly marked, not just on one set of plans, but in multiple locations, that, that it was required to be reduced to, to four feet. I do have some hesitation about us sort of giving cover for a, a mistake, a clear contractor error, and just, just providing that, you know, cover after the fact for something that the contractor screwed up on. I, and reading through staff's report, listening to staff's presentation, I do feel, you know, looking at the, some of the variant standards, it's, it's, you know, a hard position to, to be in, but I, I don't feel that all the variant standards were, were met. And I, I think that what staff laid out in their staff report seems accurate to me, having read it. Any other discussion? There's, yeah, if there's no additional discussion, then the chair will entertain a motion.
I think that he maybe could meet A and B.
Well, I'm not sure if we can do this popcorn, if I should raise my hand, but...
Yeah, go ahead.
For C, I mean, the special privileges, you know, I think, you know, granting a variance for this, I don't believe it's the one, the first time we've granted a variance in a front setback for a, for a taller than four-foot height gate with context. The other ways that this, it seems to be, it's suggesting that people comply with it, is they do a four-foot height gate and then some decorative feature above. But I like the aesthetic look of a continuous, solid gate. So where it's subjective, right? So the point of, like, you know, that added foot, if already people in the neighborhood are doing it and they can just see through some of it more, then like, they're still just applying the interpretation of the code to their benefit. And in this case, I think, you know, we have to decide whether that added foot is in context of the neighborhood for this specific property. But I think saying that it's a, it doesn't comply because it's, because it's a special privilege, I think there's precedent in, in assigning approvals to, to lots that have special circumstances that meet, you know, the, the variant standard A complies by having a peculiar piece of land structure building. Literal interpretation of the code is why we're here debating this, because the process says it's not allowed, and this is the process to go through to approve it. So I think it would apply to D if it meets all three, A through C personally.
Is there further discussion, or is, are we ready for a motion?
I mean, I might as well go as far as to motion. If there's no other discussion, then. I'm going to move that the Zoning Board of Appeals grant ZBA Case Number 3555, a request by Fernando Rodriguez for a variance of Section 94-302B of the City's zoning and land development regulations for the installation of a driveway, slide gate, and pedestrian gate along Bunker Ranch to be one foot higher than what is permitted within the front setback relating to the minimum property development regulations in the zoning district. The motion is based upon the testimony presented along with the application submitted in staff report, which constitute competent substantial evidence. The board hereby makes finding a fact that each of the criteria in Article 2, Section 94-38D6 of the City of West Palm Beach zoning and land development regulations have been met. And there's a condition that the front setback variant shall only apply to the proposed driveway, slide gate, and pedestrian gates.
Clarification for staff before we ask for a second. Would, would that condition need to read driveway, slide gate, pedestrian gates, and fence since there is a fixed section of fence?
I would say that the fixed portion of the fence is included in the driveway gate. It's everything. It's everything.
Okay, so it's, it's implied that it's included?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. I can live with that. The motion's been made. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? Okay. I'll ask our board secretary to please call the roll.
Deborah Peters?
I move to deny.
Dana Pecot? Christopher Hagan?
No.
Sherry Hack?
Approve.
Jonathan Burgess?
Yes, hope.
The motion fails three to two. As we require four votes, is there a substitute motion?
Mr. Chairman, I just point out now that if that motion fails and there's no substitute, then that operates as a denial for the application since the relief requested was not granted.
When I suspect if there were a motion to deny, that would also, assuming, just by the way that vote went, that would also fail because it would likely be a two-three vote, just, you know, just as we stand, so.
Is the motion of denial then requires those that vote for denial to stipulate which, which standards it doesn't comply with more specifically?
If, if we're voting no, I'd...
What is that question? I'm sorry.
The question, I'll just pose it to the, the attorney, was for those voting in the negative on the motion to approve, the motion we just heard, are those voting in the negative required to note their reason for denial? In other words, citing the, the variant standards that are not met?
Yes, we would need to identify the standards that were not met since the relief requested has not been granted.
Okay. Because it's, because if it were not to be approved, because normally we don't do that. If it's, if it's a motion for denial, we usually identify the reason the variant standards that are not met in that motion for denial. But usually if it's a, a vote to approve and somebody votes in the negative, they just usually vote in the negative. But in this case, because it would function as a denial, this board would need to note...
That is correct. The applicant has the option, should the motion stand as, as voted, to appeal to the circuit court. And if the applicant does, the applicant would need to be able to allege the basis for the denial if they wanted to challenge it.
And the, this is a little bit of ignorance on my part, I guess. If, are, is there any relief that can be granted by city commission? Can, can the applicant appeal to city commission, or is, or does it go to...
Decision of this board is final.
Okay.
And that the appeal is to the circuit court.
The appeal, right, would be to the court, not to commission. Because I think, is it planning board that you can appeal to city commission? Well, I guess that they're just a recommending body, so never mind. Yeah. Yeah, I think as then, you know, given where we are, if there's no, as one of the people that voted in, in the negative, I would identify that, that my negative vote was based on my agreement with the staff report that, that four of the variant standards, which would be standard A, peculiar to land structure or building, was not met, B, the actions of the applicant, that that standard was not met, special privileges, C, C, special privileges was not met, and D, literal interpretation was not met. Would we need affirmation from the other no vote?
If, if the other no vote agrees with that, that person can indicate that if they have additional standards that were not met, you'd want that on the record as well.
I agree with the staff report and also, I think, E, where the one-foot high encroachment of the proposed fence, pedestrian gate, and slide gate is based on the existing placement and configuration of the home.
Have a question.
Yes.
Could an alternate motion be that we agree that he meets all of the standards? He, that he meets A, B, C, D?
Well, I believe that, that that's implied in the, in the original motion because that's, it's required. It, that would be correct, I think.
That is correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
The original motion was to approve.
So I think, given, given where we are, that's, that's the final...
That is correct.
...note on this, this item. So the item is not approved, and the reasons were stated for, you know, for that.
So I have a question there. So if the denial requires a three-two vote, but the, but just the lap, lack of an absent approval then turns into a denial, but then on a two-three vote, that's what, so you really only need two votes for a denial? Is that what we're saying?
That's, my understanding is that either, I mean, what happened at the prior meeting was that it was a, the, a motion was made, and I'm trying to remember the order they, they were made in, but one was for denial. I believe that was the first motion that, but it was, it was a three-two vote. So we then moved to a motion for approval, but that, I believe, I have to look back at the minutes now to confirm. I think then that was a, I believe that was a two-three vote. So we ended up, yeah, that's correct.
So I guess the difference between a denial is just that they can't come back for a period of time, whereas just a silent vote to not approve then just leaves them with nothing?
So we ended up last time because of being stuck there with a motion to continue to request that the applicant come back with additional information. So part of that was information on the, the cost implications of, of if, if it were to be reduced from five feet to four feet, and then additional evidence to counteract the staff findings that, that certain variance criteria were not met. And so we, we came back here. It certainly, you know, I think where we are, the, the other option would be to continue it again, but we'd have to have a reason for, there would need to be a reason if there were either additional evidence that would affect the decision of this board that could be provided. That would, that would be the primary reason, both, I guess, against evidence for it and/or evidence that the variance, more evidence that the variance criteria are in fact met.
I think, so like, I'm one of the people that went from no to yes, and a lot of it had to do with Mr. Burgess and his comments as far as interpreting how they went about the staff recommendations. And I'm wondering if maybe that might provide some insight if they were to revisit, like he was saying about existing, like, outer areas and the way that people were around, able to get around that particular type of fencing and having a light on that road and it's acts somewhat of a thoroughfare. Perhaps that might change things a little, but I'm not sure.
I think it's, and I'd certainly, welcome the applicant up to the, the microphone if, if you are willing to, to come back again a month later and, and if, if there were additional evidence that could be provided, if you're willing to do that, or, or if you would just rather go forward with the way things have proceeded today.
Mr. Chairman, let me indicate now that you've taken final action in terms of your original motion. If you're going to do something different, you would first have to entertain a motion to reconsider, which would have to be made by a person on the prevailing side. If that passed, then you could do something different. If it didn't, you're not, at this point, in a position to do anything different from your final action.
Understood. Is it, in, in these proceedings, may I ask a question of the applicant to, that would inform our...
Yes, you certainly can.
So, and that's, that's, and understand, you know, from the process standpoint, that's what we need to do. I think if, if the applicant would rather not come back another month, have another month delay and, and come back, then I don't, then I don't think we need to go down the path of reconsidering. So I would just like to understand that from the applicant's perspective.
I've, I've come back this time. I would rather get it approved today and not have to come back, but it seems like we're again at a stalemate. If, if that is what is needed, I will, I will come back and I guess I'll do more research and find more homes that, I don't know if that makes a difference or not, but...
So, yeah, just to clarify, I think where, yeah, where it stands today, I think, is, is it looks like it would either be a denial today or, and I can't guarantee the outcome, we would have to reconsider. But, but the other option, maybe for this board to reconsider and, and have it continued again for another month. And then we would provide you, if that were the case, we would provide you with direction on what additional information is needed for this board to decide. So again, if, I'm asking the question because if your, if your position is, I don't want to go through another month of this, then, then we wouldn't reconsider. But if, if you're willing to, I think then we can talk about a vote to reconsider.
I, I'm open to coming back if, if there's a chance that this would get approved, so I don't have to go through the, you know, what it would take to, to make the, the correction of the, the gate as it sits today, you know. I don't know when the next meeting is.
So it's in one month, it'll be the first, well, it, we changed the January hearing to Friday. Is it Friday, January 9?
Ninth, yeah. It's Friday, January 9.
Friday, January 9. Yeah, so the next meeting would be Friday, January 9.
So I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be here for that. I already have travel plans.
Okay. The following meeting would be the first Thursday in February.
Yeah.
So I, again, I think your choices probably are either there's, you know, it's, as it stands right now, it's, it's denied, or you can come back. We, well, again, I can't guarantee the outcome of a vote. This board can entertain, could potentially entertain a motion to reconsider that in order to continue it, and then it would be February 9, or sorry, February, first Thursday, February.
May I inquire, Angela, is there a code citation involved with this matter that would be a factor? Is there a code hearing or...
I don't think a citation was issued. It was the fact when the billing inspector went out due to inspection. He doesn't have a seal, a certificate of completion. He failed it because it didn't meet the provisions that's in the, on the plans. So it hasn't been cited per se. It's just an open billing permit right now. And he's trying to get that so he can get a final on his fence, but he won't get a final because it's only when I approve it.
Do you know if there's a time that he's required to bring it into compliance?
I don't know if it's a time per se. They're just waiting on us per se. It's not a timeframe before you get your seals, like six months, seven months. They have to work with that part of it. And just to clarify, when, when the planner talked about, in an ideal world, yes, when we put provisos on plans, the contractor should print them out and should have them on site. We do no longer have paper copies. We don't do anything. It's up to the contractor to print it out and follow it. So when the inspector comes, the inspector has a computer, so he looks on the computer. So just to clarify that, sometimes they do So just to clarify that, sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. Not going to say our system is perfect because now they have to print it out and follow that. The contractor just could have seen it's done and he didn't look at the proviso and be real honest with you. We're working on that to get contractors to understand and actually go in and actually print the documents and have them on site and go in and look at them. So, but just to clarify that, they supposed to print them, yes, and have them on site as the planner stated, but that's not always happening, we're finding out.
And is this related to the new process with the, with the electronic plan and permit review process that has been live for how long roughly?
It's just for, for fences, just us. You said currently review process?
No, I'm asking when timeline wise, did the switch to this new electronic kind of process?
Oh, we've been electronic for three years, two years?
Okay.
Two years?
So the contractors?
Yeah, because right now what, what the system goes, planning, we try not to deny, we could have denied it, make them resubmit, but we try to proviso it simply so to get it, this fence, to get it out, so they stamp it. There has to be, you know, four feet, even though we know the plans were wrong. And then once we prove it's issued, contractors in the computer system, the contractor goes on, supposed to print the billing permit out, print the proof set of plans. The city does that, does not do that anymore. It's up to the contractors to do that and then follow what was said, what was put as provisos on the plans.
Okay, we got the, thank you, Ms. Jones Van, and, you know, thank you to the applicant for answering the question. So we, you know, this board can hear a.
I'll make a motion for reconsideration. And do we bring it back to?
So who's considered the prevailing side though? Would it be that even though the, the two votes that were in the minority?
That is correct.
Yeah, it's, it's a kind of an unusual, yeah, situation. So if, so I'll ask Ms. Peters if she would like to make a motion to reconsider, or if not, I actually would be willing to pass the gavel for a second, but did you, would you wish to make a motion to reconsider?
Yes.
Okay. And that could be seconded by anyone? I'll ask the board secretary, I'm sorry, board attorney or?
Oh, yes.
Whether they, it could be seconded by anyone, whether they're on the prevailing side.
Second.
Okay, so the motion was made by Board Member Peters and seconded by Board Member Burgess to reconsider. Is there any discussion on the motion to reconsider?
That's a simple majority vote for it.
Okay, thank you. We're getting into all kinds of nuances of our board rules today. Is, is there any discussion on the motion to reconsider? Okay, I'll ask our board secretary to please call the roll.
Deborah Peters?
Yes.
Dana Pecot?
Yes.
Christopher Hagan?
Yes.
Sherry Hack?
Yes.
Jonathan Burgess?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes five to zero to reconsider the prior vote. I'll now entertain a motion on the floor.
Are we allowed to have any more executive discussion?
So yes, feel free to, so yes, we can, if no, there's no motion present, so if we'd like to discuss, that's, that's possible. I did, and actually just, sorry, ask a question of planning staff. If it's a motion to continue, it does not need to be re-advertised, correct? Okay. So yeah, just, you probably need to say in the microphone.
Yes, they don't need to advertise again.
Okay, so this does not need to be advertised, but in the motion, if a motion were to be made, we would, the motion maker would indicate a date certain, correct?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
Sorry. If a, if a motion were made to, to, to continue this case, it would need to be made for a date certain?
Yes, considering that he's not available in January, as I understand it.
Yeah, he's not available in January, so it'd be the first Thursday of February.
Okay, I'm going to look up that date real quickly just to make sure. So, sorry, I just wanted to get, you know, clarify those items, Jonathan, but, but yeah, if there's discussion.
Yeah, I mean, just reflecting on comments from staff and the applicant and the board, I think, you know, the, the understanding of, a fuller understanding of, of other examples in the neighborhood, if they are existing and comparing kind of with what staff has presented for their analysis, just along Bunker Ranch Road to give a full perspective. And then always in these considerations, having neighborhood feedback, if support or against the application is helpful, and I know that your neighbors have already voiced some level of support or otherwise, or haven't received any feedback, but the more of the, of the feedback we get from the community, I think in general makes, helps us make a decision in context of its impact on the neighborhood. So I would say to the applicant for the next round, anything else, do we get to review any new information submitted next month, or are they coming back with the same package, unless otherwise directed by us specifically for added deliverables?
Yeah, so I, I believe that any new inform, that new information can be presented at the next hearing, and that's actually what, what we are asking of the applicant. And I think if staff had any additional information to add at that time, then staff would also enter that into the record. So both, so that, that is the reason for the continuance is for us to get additional information, so that would be added into the presentation and information provided to this board by either the applicant or staff. Yeah, my only other direction to the applicant would be knowing that, you know, the, the findings currently are that criteria A, B, C, and D are not met, that would be, I think the focus is to indicate reasons, any supporting documentation that you can provide that would, that would indicate that those criteria are met. Any other direction from this board before we entertain a motion?
If you do have a quote from the construction company specifying what and why you have to absorb the extra cost to have it fixed, that would be helpful as well.
Yeah, I, it seems like it is their fault. I mean, that, I, I don't know, you know, that seems like that, that should be on their shoulders, not yours. If, if there's no other direction and any other discussion for this board, then I'll entertain a motion.
A motion to continue until the February 5th agenda?
Okay. Motion is made by Board Member Burgess, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion is made by Board Member Burgess and seconded by Board Member Pecot. I'll ask our board secretary to please call the roll.
Deborah Peters?
Aye.
Dana Pecot?
Yes.
Christopher Hagan?
Yes.
Sherry Hack?
Yes.
Jonathan Burgess?
Yes. Okay. Case number 3555 is now continued to the February 5th, 2026 zoning board of appeals meeting. Okay. We'll now go on to item C1, which is zoning board of appeals, case number 3557. I'll ask our board secretary to please read that item into the record.
A request by Mr. Peter Ivanoff for a Class B special use permit with waivers to allow for the construction of a 798 square foot accessory dwelling unit on a lot less than 60 feet in width within the single-family, high-density SF-14 residential zoning district to be built concurrently with primary residence. The subject property consisting of approximately 0.14 acres is located at 1129th Street within Commission District Number Three, Commissioner Christie Fox.
Thank you. I'll first ask if the applicant is present to approach and make a presentation.
I don't know why it's not showing. It's not showing there, we see here.
Yeah, I think it's because this is open.
Okay. It worked.
It worked. This is mine.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, board members. I am not Peter Ivanoff, I am Simon Gonzalez. I'm a representative of the owner, I'm a certified building contractor here in the state of Florida. So we are here to talk about project at 1129th Street, and it is a special use permit, Class B residential with waiver for a non-conforming lot. The lot requirements are 60 feet and this lot is 50 feet in width. So the reason for the request is Mr. Peter Ivanoff is a first-time home buyer. His goal is to create a small family-oriented property improvement that supports his household and strengthen the community around him. It provides affordable housing, and in order to achieve this goal, a waiver is needed to utilize the lot that he currently owns, which is 50 feet in width, and the current, the current zoning requirement for this ADU is that the lot have a minimum width of 60 feet. This is the overview, the eagle's eye view of the property. It is on 9th Street and off of Carver Avenue. The picture to the bottom left is the picture of the lot, and the layout and site plan is to the right, showing the primary structure at the center of the property with the additional dwelling unit to the rear of it on the top of the screen. These are more elevation views of the actual ADU and the primary structure. The ADU is on the top right-hand corner of the slideshow. The main structure is the larger structure in the center on the right-hand side of the slideshow. This also includes obviously the landscape plan that is in accordance with the building code. So there, again, the reason for this request is, is because this lot width is, the lot width of this lot is 50 feet, and the requirement is 60 feet in order to have these, this ADU. The ADU currently is designed to fall within the code, so it's code compliant for setbacks and building structure. The primary residence and the ADU is obviously functional within the use of a lot. The height of the ADU is 23 feet, six and three eighths inches. If you look at the actual site plan picture that you see here, just has some more details in regards to the existing fence on the west property line, which is, if you can see here on the cursor, which is this fence right here. The neighboring property has almost the same exact layout and site plan. There will be privacy fences that are going to fall within code to the rear and to the east of the property, which is here's the rear, and this is the east side of the property. And obviously the front is going to have, as depicted, a fence as well that's going to meet the height requirement of four feet. The three parking spaces provided are shown here as well. So in regards to the neighborhood consistency, there are nearby properties that have the same lot width with the same variance approved. Two within the same block and one on the bottom right-hand corner, which is off of 8th Street. The subject property is shown in outlined in blue. The property directly west of it, which is 1126 9th Street, is a main house with an ADU recently built. And again, like I said, this, this floor plan almost exactly mirrors that layout. To the northeast, you have 1109 9th Street, which is similar layout, similar plan with, which is a main house and an ADU recently built, and all of these lots are same width, they're all non-conforming lots at 50 feet. In the bottom, as you can see, the ZBA has, the zoning board authority has recently granted these applicants' requests for a Class B special use permit to construct the accessory dwelling unit on the same street and obviously off of 8th Street. The personal need for this, for the client is he's a first-time home buyer, he's building this residence. The property was purchased strictly with the purpose of maximizing the land use and provide housing for his aging parents that are, come and visit him from outside the country. And it obviously helps support the family needs and affordability. So in conclusion, I hope this, we have demonstrated that this meets all the requirements for the criteria. We also have a letter of support from the neighbor Eric Salma, which is, he lives on 1127 9th Street, which is the lot directly northwest in front of his. I don't know if you need this or if it's already been included for the record?
It is in the stack.
Understood. And we're requesting, you know, respectfully requesting approval of this Class B special use permit with waiver for the lot width.
Okay, thank you. We'll now open it up for any questions that the board may have of the applicant. I'll start off with Board Member Burgess.
Were you involved in the, in the construction of any of the other precedents that you've outlined in the neighborhood?
I'm sorry, I can.
Were you involved in the other reference examples that you've provided within the neighborhood?
No, Mr. Burgess, I was not, I was not involved in any of those constructions now.
No other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Okay. Board Member Hack?
Just to confirm, you said that the parents will be living accessory dwelling?
Yes, the intent is for this to be utilized by the parents when they come and visit from out of the country, as obviously, you know, the, the square footage of the main residence makes it a little challenging for that to happen.
Is it going to be rented out in between or just stay vacant until the parents visit?
No, ma'am, there is no, there's no use permit and there is no, what is it called? The, there's no like Airbnb permit or anything of that sort. He's going to occupy this residence and it's going to be, it's solely residential for him and his private use.
Okay, thank you.
Board Member Pecot?
No questions.
And Board Member Peters?
No questions.
Okay, I have no questions, the applicant. Well, actually, sorry, I do. I think it was in your presentation, I just wanted to clarify, the, there was the one condition, and again, I think you had in your presentation, I just wanted to make sure that you were okay with that regarding the, it said the opaque privacy fence slash wall be provided along the east and rear, there would be six feet and then dropping down to four feet within the 25-foot setback?
Yes, sir. It's in, it's in this page of the slideshow, and we've, we've annotated in there as well that the privacy fence shall be, that's going to be provided on the south and the east will have a height of six feet, and then the front fence will have a height not to exceed four feet.
Yep, okay. Yes, I just wanted to clarify that because that is a condition. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
We'll now ask staff to come forward and make a presentation, please.
Good afternoon. Alrighty, I'm Marissa Jaramchuk, planner with the city of West Palm Beach, presenting this case. This, we already saw this, this is where the property is located, is all a residential neighborhood. It's between basically the Durst Canal to the, to the west, and then the railroad tracks to the east, and then a few blocks north is Palm Beach Lakes, and south of here, the main, say the main road, it's not a main road, it's a local road, but it connects east to west, it's 7th Street. The houses all around are mostly in the same zoning as, as it should be, the same zoning district is SF-14, and we can see here, the look from the, view looking from the street and view looking from the, the rear of the house or the lot, better said, towards the street in the front. The applicant is building the main house together, or his intent is to build the main house together with the accessory dwelling unit at the same time. So accessory apartments have additional standards, and it says additional because accessory structures are allowed in single-family, low-density zoning also, but not accessory apartments. SF-14 is the only single-family residential. SF-14 is the only single-family residential zoning district that allows accessory apartments like this one. Um, this lot meets all the, uh, additional application requirements and almost all the additional standards, as you see in number B. The only one it doesn't meet is the lot width, which is 60 feet, and the, the lot is 50. So the waiver would be for 10 feet. Um, the 50-foot wide lots located within the 300-feet distance radius were, a few of them were permitted already to include accessory apartments in the last few years, and they are basically in the same case. Um, we saw this already in another, um, slide, and in the bag is the accessory apartment in the front, it is the main structure, and this is the site plan, we already saw the landscape plan. And I included this because this is the, uh, property right next door, and it looks just like what the applicant is, uh, applying for. So we recommend, staff recommends approval of the ZBA case 3557. It meets standards in all these sections, and we only need the waiver standards for section 94-273A2, which, with regards to the, um, uh, lot width. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Uh, we'll now ask if anyone from the board has questions of staff. I'll start off with, uh, Member Hack.
No questions.
Okay. Member Pecot?
No questions.
Member Peters?
No questions.
Member Burgess?
No questions for staff.
Okay. I have a question, um, and this may be more of a question for Ms. Jones Van. Um, the, uh, it looks like this neighborhood was platted with all 50-foot wide lots. I used to live in Flamingo Park, which was platted with all 50-foot lots, and it, throughout Flamingo Park, it had this condition with, um, main structures and then accessory apartments behind. Is there a reason why our code doesn't recognize that, just given the prevalence of 50-foot lots throughout the site and, um, that, I'm, I'm just surprised that our code is written in a way that requires 60-foot lots when a 50-foot wa, lot width is very prevalent throughout the, uh, throughout the city and a lot of neighborhoods, and a lot of the neighborhoods have this, why, why our code would say 60 feet instead of, instead of kind of recognizing that, that condition? Or, and, and also if there's any, ever been any discussion to possibly change it to 50 feet?
Angela Van, Assistant Development Service Director. Um, no, the rate was originally written was based on density, because basically when you got a 50-by-100-foot wide lot in terms of 5,000 square feet, and you put in two units on it, so that's the way it was originally calculated all those years ago. Um, that's why we say 60-by-100, uh, that's the minimum, you have, must have 6,000 square feet, that's not even waivable. So I'm saying you got it, so even if you got a 50-foot wide lot, you got to at least have a 125, because 6,000 square feet is not even waivable. Um, so that's, it's based on density, having two units on a lot for the most part. We, we've kicked it around a lot about, do we change that to 50? Do we do that? And in honest with you, it depends on what comes out of the next legislative session that requires municipalities to allow, um, ADUs everywhere, then we may have, may have to change that, um, requirement somehow and try to figure out what we're going to do, but, uh, that's why it was done, based on density.
Yeah, thank you. I was, is more out of curiosity, but, um, again, it, there, obviously, there's a lot of, um, a lot of compatibility with, with other, this situation throughout this neighborhood and in others in, in the city. Okay. Um, now, uh, open the public hearing. Um, I didn't receive any cards on this item. I will ask if there's anybody in the audience to speak on this item. Seeing none, I'll ask staff if there are any voicemails, emails, or any official items to read into the record.
Uh, no, there was only one of the letters from the neighbors who, uh, was agreeable with the whole project.
Okay, thank you. Uh, with that, I'll close the public session. I'll ask the applicant if you do want to come up and rebut anything or make any final statements. If not, okay, I'm seeing no, uh, so then we'll move to, uh, executive session among the board. Um, I'll start off with, uh, Board Member Pecot.
No comments.
Okay. Board Member Peters?
No comments.
Okay. Board Member Burgess?
No comments.
Okay. Board Member Hack?
No comments.
Um, yeah, no, no comments for me. I, I think I already kind of said my comment. I think it seems very compatible, um, with, uh, with what's here, and given the number of 50-foot lots throughout the city in this exact same condition that have this, you know, have ADUs with them, and seems to be a, a sustainable and compatible development, um, style that, uh, seems very logical. Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll motion to approve that the zoning board of appeals grant, I'm sorry, I moved that the zoning board of appeals grant ZBA case number 3557, a request by Peter Ivanoff for a Class B special use permit to grant a waiver to the 60-foot wide lot width requirement for construction of an accessory apartment within the single-family high-density SF-14 residential zoning district. The motion is based upon the testimony presented, along with the application submitted and staff report, which constitute competent substantial evidence. The board hereby makes finding of fact that each of the criteria in section 94-36E3 through 5, section 94-273A2, and section 94-303 of the City of West Palm Beach zoning and land development regulations have been met. In addition, the granting of this Class B special use permit is made conditional upon the following restrictions, stipulations and/or safeguards that I move are necessary to ensure compliance with the purpose and intent of the zoning and land development regulations and consistent with the comprehensive plan of the City of West Palm Beach. Uh, number one, an opaque privacy fence wall shall be provided along an entire, the entire side, east and rear, south property lines. The height of the fence or wall shall be six feet, except for that portion that extends into the front setback, first 25 feet of the front north property line, which shall not exceed four feet in height.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion was made by Board Member Burgess and seconded by Board Member Pecot. Uh, is there any further discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask our secretary to please call the roll.
Deborah Peters?
Yes.
Dana Pecot?
Yes.
Christopher Hagan?
Yes.
Sherry Hack?
Yes.
Jonathan Burgess?
Yes.
Uh, the item is approved, five to zero. With that, um, we go to unfinished business, new business? Any other business? Um, seeing none on our agenda?
Happy holidays, everyone. See you next year.
Yes, happy holidays. Uh, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded by Board Member Burgess, seconded by, uh, Board Member Pecot. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
3:07 PM, the meeting is adjourned.